Welcome everyone, this is a meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Today is May 23rd. It is 11:00 AM. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is being audio and video recorded. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which we stand. One nation, unuttered, indivisible, liberating, just as it is now.
First order of business, gentlemen, is we have paving. I just vaguely put paving for a discussion. We went out to bid, I think it was in September, October of last year, to pave, catch up on some paving from EverSource's trenching, gas main trenching. It's been a long, painful process for all the residents that are butting those roads that have been trenched, and I apologize for taking this long, but we were tied up with EverSource on some funding. After the Board voted on funding, they had a discussion about not funding it to those amounts, but then we got EverSource to fund it to those amounts, and moving forward, we've been doing things a little bit differently. So with that said, we did put out Middle Road, Badano, Corey, Henrietta, and Arthur Anthony, and things of the like, in the last bid that we put out to bid, so I would like a motion to award that bid, and have Mr. Manad work with the bidder to have, he needs to do some modifications to a small area of the bid spec. So, I talked with Town Council. Town Council said it's fine. It's such a minute share amount of footage, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have any relevance to it. So, is there a motion to approve that bid on that work?
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The other thing that I want to bring up on the paving is, so that this doesn't happen again to everybody else that have been impacted by EverSource's gas mains, which is Nice Lane, Randall, Kendrick, Joseph, Earl, and I forgot the other name of the other street, that's Helen, that's over off the Birch Street area. That's all been ripped up by EverSource as well. We've gotten some allocations for those roads, so I would ask for a motion to have Mr. Manad put those in different segments for the Randall, Nice Lane, Kendrick, as they've been allocated from EverSource, and then the Earl, Helen, and Joseph, to put each one of those into separate bid specs, so that Mr. Kelly could put that out to bid as well. Is there a motion?
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I would also like to have myself and Mr. Manad work on, before we go out and have that kind of stuff done, I have to look inside the bid specs, because I did notice something inside the previous bid specs about resetting manholes in storm drains, and I think that's absolutely pertinent, that DPW staff does that, or if it's in the bid specs for somebody else to do, which I don't know if it is yet, but if it's not, that's something that we need to do as a town, and reset storm drains and manholes so that they're at the right grade when finished paving is done, and you don't end up with a pothole from a manhole or a storm drain, things of the like. So, is there a motion in that effect?
So, move.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. And we should be keeping up. Those are the only three that I can think of right now for EverSource gas main replacement, and I know that Mr. Inkley will be sitting with the Town Administrator, and Anthony from EverSource, and staff to decide what we're gonna do with the wing road. I know that I told EverSource already that closure of a road of that magnitude is not acceptable, so please just keep that in mind in your discussion, seeing how you are a resident down at that end.
Mr. Chairman, regarding those streets that we just voted on, I'd like to have the DPW send a communication off to those residents, just to let them know what the status is, right? If things are all ripped up, just so we can say, you know, the Board voted to put out to bid, you know, it's our intention to have that work. Just to have it hanging out there, I think would be a black mark for us, so I'd like to make a motion to direct the DPW to send out a status update to the residents on those streets.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Alright, I think that's pretty much it on the road paving. Actually, there's one other thing that I want to add, because I did get a complaint. I think it's Pembroke or Paygar Road over here by Sean Madauto, up that side road over there where Labonte goes up to, I think it's James Street, it's about a 200-foot stretch, it's just, it's crumbled, the road's crumbled. It floods out when we get rain. I would like to add, and it's not part of the EverSource mains, but if we're gonna put things out to bid, while they're in here with a milling machine, I would like to have a conversation with Dan and do a measurement out there of maybe 200 feet, I believe it would probably come out to, to add that to the, one of the bids of one of those other two projects.
Yep.
To just, you know, it might be, you know, $25,000, but we'll take that from Chapter 90 funds to pave that road as well.
That road's in terrible shape, right there, so.
It is. I mean, there's a lot of our roads that are in terrible shape, I just, I went out and spoke to a number of residents on the road, and I said, "I'm gonna address it in a Board meeting, and we'll see what the Board's pleasure is on getting it done." So, is there a motion to have me work with Dan on doing a measurement on that road and adding it to one of the bid specs that we're putting out from the EverSource?
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Fiscal year, 25 budget and warrant. Gentlemen, I'll be honest, we've been going through, Mr. Kelly and I have gone through the budget mostly, the warrant, I briefly went through. I just let Mr. Kelly know this morning that there's some things that we need to correct within the warrant articles, but I will go through, as long as I can read them all with a print that's going through them all, I will go through the budgets one last time, and the amounts that they are at, and we'll have a conversation at the end about our balanced budget going to Town Meeting. So, Reserve Fund, $150,000, Town Meeting Elections, 35, 343, 875, Moderator, 273, 868, Selectmen, Finance Committee, 2,900, Accountant, 232, 071.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
That one was changed to 230, 071.
Accountant, 230.
After we went to print.
Okay. 230, 071, Town Accountant, Assessors, 187, 645, Treasurer Collector, 271, 821, Town Council, 100, Technology, 236, 025, Town Clerk, 157, 783, Board of Registries, 42, 225, Conservation Commission, 84,250, Soil Board, 16,5, Planning Board, 96,50, Board of Appeals, 6,150, Town Buildings, 219, 568, Police Department, 2,956, 031, Fire Department, EMS Department, 1,131, 509, Seals, Awaiting Measures, 1169, 179, for Emergency Management, Animal Control, 59, 496, Forestry, 19,000, Oak Colony, 2,909, 968, Accusative School Department, 16,393, 963, Department of Public Works, Highway, 1,676, Snow and Ice, 110, Street Lightning, 27,350, CMAS, 1,322, 612, Cemetery, 6,789, Water Reserve Fund, 60,000, Public Works Water, 1,797, 118, Water Debt Service, 206, 992, Border Health, 158, 714, Council on Agent, 136, 678, Veterans, 177, 217, Library, 299, 508, Parks Department, 49, 967, Historical Commission, 9,160, Miscellaneous Account, 10,000, is that one 12?
12.
Miscellaneous, 12,000. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Regional Government Expense, 3,748, Town's Debt Principal, 330,000, Town's Long-Term Debt Interest, 98,035, Short-Term Debt Interest, 61,250, Pensions, 2,062, 439, Insurance, 2, 471, 421, for a grand total of 36,183, 491.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kelly.
When you're reading, you transpose two numbers, and the Accusative School Department,
School Department, huh? Where is School Department again now? 33, 25. Let me just try to find, let me just try to, 16, 393, 663? Oh, I said something different?
You changed the 9 to a 6 to a 9.
Okay, boss, thank you for that correction. So, as you gentlemen know, we've had a, I don't even know what the deficit was anymore, but I think it was somewhere over a million dollars, Mr. Kelly?
1.2.
And reshuffling the deck, trying to make ends meet for some of the obligations that the town has made with contract negotiations and things of the like, and the increases from the School Department. It was not an easy process going through the budgets, because it's, it's difficult for departments that have submitted budgets, basically level funded, and then going in and cannibalizing those budgets. We tried to minimize cannibalizing those budgets, I should say, as much as possible, so that we're not stealing from Peter to pay from to Paul. However, we were able to manage that, and raise revenues to a degree on the recap sheet that, in my opinion, I think in Mr. Kelly's opinion, is a somewhat uncomfortable level, but it was the only way possible to balance a budget, by doing certain things with a revenue sheet, the recap sheet. With that said, we minimized the amount of impact of the budgets, to balance a budget as best as we could. There would be no way that we would ever be able to balance a budget, as much as we've increased certain revenue lines on the recap sheet to a degree, again, which is strenuous on the recap sheet. I don't think we could have done this, first of all, without Mr. Fallon, Chief Fallon's help from the Fire and EMS, because we did raise revenues in roughly in the amount of $36,000 from the EMS Reserve Receipt Account to balance the budget. We increased excise tax usage on the recap sheet by $50,000, and the investment income, interest income line, we adjusted that up quite substantially, and that's the one that I'm not particularly comfortable on, so without the cooperation from Chief Fallon, and throwing in that additional $36,000 from the Fire EMS Reserve Receipt Account. Every year, we normally use $514,000 out of EMS Reserve Receipt Account to balance the budget. This year, we increased that to 550, thanks to the cooperation of the Chief Fallon, so again, it's been extremely difficult financial times for the town, but we've managed to redo the recap sheet, and redo some of the budgets to the best of our ability, and it wasn't until yesterday that Mr. Kelly and I sat down with some fine tuning of a few thousand bucks here and there, from different departments, that we were able to balance the budget. So, I've spent an exorbitant amount of time over the last, I'll call it, two months, with Mr. Kelly, looking at things and getting beat up on things and things of the like, but Mr. Kelly and I have a lot of hours booked into this, and he's thrown a lot of paper at me. As most of you can see, this is basically all the paper that Mr. Kelly's thrown at me over the last couple of months, and I have to backcheck everything and make sure the numbers are right, and, you know, we've done our back and forth, but I'm proud to say to the townspeople that we actually have a balanced budget, and we can continue on government operations into the new year, as long as it's voted on by Town Meeting. So, I don't know if there's any other questions about the budget and how we balance budgets, but we're basically down to the last dollar.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just say this, first of all, thank you to you, Mr. Chairman, this year, in working with Mr. Kelly. Not easy circumstances, given the fact that we haven't essentially not had a full-time Town Accountant. You know, we had somebody that moved on, we brought on.
Or an assistant.
So, thank you for your service. You know, I think this year, we just really had to put the finger in the, in the hole. But moving forward, you know, once we collect our breath, I think there's a few things, I'm hoping, you know, we'll have some other methodology, right? The meals tax piece passes, you know, not ideal, but it's something, you know, it's a tool in the toolbox. You know, we've talked about solo revenues and how we view those with pilots, and, you know, one issue that I really, you know, wanted to lean into is how we utilize Town Council. We funded it at $100,000. I'm not willing to cut it right now, because I think we have some outstanding, you know, lawsuits pending, but, you know.
Substantial.
I think at times, unfortunately, we've weaponized legal counsel in some of the decisions that have been made, you know, that may have been too aggressive towards either homeowners or people just trying to do basic business in town, and I hope we get away from that, because it's not a, it's not a piggy bank that we can just keep relying on, go to Town Council, go to Town Council, go to Town Council, go to Land Court, go to Land Court. It's not a way to do business. So, thanks for that. Lastly, not ideal, but look at staffing levels, whether, you know, things can go to part-time, or can we use technology? And, you know, I think that's probably a bigger issue, that requires more thought, but something we should think about in the off-season. So, again, hats off to you, to Mr. Kelly, and to all the department heads who really stepped up. Great job.
It's, look, it's not the ideal situation, right? I mean, we've, I know, we've made some cuts in overtime, that I know certain people aren't happy with, right? But it's the only way to get the budget through and balance a budget. There's nowhere else left to go. We've been at this for a while, right? It's basically budgets are skin and bones, other than salaries. So, when we went through the budgets, and it was even getting difficult finding 1,000 bucks, because it's mostly pertaining to salaries, if you add them all up, it was, it was a difficult process. I think next year is gonna be a more difficult process. And one last thing I will say about learning more about the recap sheet versus the budget, that was really my experience over the last couple of months, and we've gotten a lot of knowledge on that, is what we've done this year to balance the budget will take away from free cash in the future, right? So, you know, we heard certain things from School Department and things of the like about revenues that we're using, well, look, we just demonstrated, we've done that. I don't think there's a lot more room left on the recap sheet and revenues to just keep saying up, up and up and up, right? It's not there, but we did it this year to the best of our ability. We definitely have to rethink the way government is being operated, I guess, but I don't know what that answer is right now, I've been too focused on numbers, so I think it's a dialogue for, just the Inkley as the next chairman, to start having and start scraping up some ideas, and of course, we'll always be on, you know, to discuss those kind of changes, because it takes a board vote, but it's getting more and more difficult with expenses, the way they're going, so. Alright, is there a motion to approve the budget part of the warrant?
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly, did you want me to even start to go through articles?
You might as well, because there's a lot of them are pro forma. And so, the, for the Board to know, the difference between the revenue figures and the budget is less than $250. That's very close.
Doesn't get much closer. I'll give you my first month's salary to close, to close that $250.
No, we haven't. We're ahead 250. I actually thought we did it to the penny, but he told me we have an extra 250 bucks, and so maybe we'll have a cookout, if we can afford it.
I just want to see Mr. Kelly.
Alright, I'm just gonna.
It'll probably go to postage for somebody.
I'm just gonna go through the warrant quick then, see if, you know, Mr. Kelly's not feeling well, Article 1, to see if the town will accept reports of officers, boards, committees, committees, and commissions as printed in 2021 in your report, act as any other relative thereto, we might have to fix that. Article 2, to see if the town will vote, will raise an appropriate transfer available funds to sum of X amount of dollars.
I ask that that one be passed over, we have none yet.
You have one for prior bills, Article 3, to see if the town will raise an appropriate transfer from available funds, looks like 3,329, to pay bills from the prior fiscal years, which is something that we do every year, if there's prior fiscal bills that need to be paid, it's a small amount of money. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sums of money from the.
This is a conservative under, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, can you identify the ones that we just do every year that are the same things?
Well, this one is changed somewhat.
Okay. The cable access one, that's all that one is, it's just how we fund our cable operations via an article. Article 5, that's just for the Board of Selectmen to apply for state and federal grants. Article 6.
The only change.
That's Chapter 90 funds, it's every year. The next Article 7 is just to vote out the Town Treasurer to borrow money from time to time, it's on every year. Article 8, Cemetery Board, to allow the Board of Selectmen to determine compensation. Article 9, Recreation Commission, to perform work in the parks and allow the Board of Selectmen to determine compensation. Article 10, to vote to allow the Library Board of Trustees to sell the sum of, you discarded books for a buck, it's on every year. Article 11.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Article 4 is the only one that changed on the cable. We added a reserve, cable reserve fund.
Yep.
In case we have any equipment kept.
That's, that's correct. So, what we did is the same thing we do in Golf Enterprise, Sewer Enterprise Water, we did the same thing with the cable account, we just put a reserve fund in, in case we have a crash in service or whatever, we have a $50,000 lump sum there to go afterward, I'll have to go to Town Meeting, because everything's being held now on the town service with the new fiber optic network. Article 10 is to buy books for a buck from the Library, authorize the Library Board of Trustees to sell books for a buck. Article 11, General Laws, that's all the revolving funds that we do every year, recycling, looks like it's, what's that amount, I got red lettering going through it, 10 grand? 10 grand, 5 grand for conservation, Soil Board is 20 grand, we have to talk about that. Mr. Kelly, Parks and Recreation, 12, 5, Council on Agent, we up to 45,000, Public Library, The next one, it's, I don't know why you don't have an article here, it's a breakdown after the special Town Meeting, that's a free cash. So, under this warrant, Jamie, there's no article, I guess it just says what the.
That's an explanation for the free cash.
Free cash. Article 12 is 81, 301, for the payment associated with joining employee health insurance purchasing, which helps us reduce our health insurance line item this year. Article 13 is to pay, transmit free cash, 74, 178, 77, for a settlement to the school district, Amro Bus Company. Article 14 is for the school, that's a hold right now. Mr. Kelly, Article 14, we don't know, there's no amount allocated to Article 14, in case they needed something in capital expenditures. Article 15 is see if the town will appropriate 145 for free cash for the following capital improvement projects, that's upgrading Vision 2, 21 radio box, fire alarm receivers, and the amount of 105 for the Fire Department, and upgrade radio system repeaters associated with equipment relocate on the 143 Peckham Road Tower, for 40,000 for the Fire Department. Article 16 is for $20,000 for the Elder's Community Services Program, something we funded in the past, it's a great program. Article 17 is $30,000 for the Youth Program, that's another great program that we've been doing, and we've funded it in the past. Article 18 is $100,000 for the Stabilization Fund. Article 19 is a breakdown of CPC funds, we've already been through that. Article 20 is for a local meals excise tax, we'll see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Master General Law, Chapter 641, Section 2A, to impose a local meals excise tax, or .75, or take any other action thereto. Mr. Warren just talked about the meals tax. Overlay Surplus funded article, is a article from Overlay Surplus to fund some of our contract negotiations from the past. Overlay funding for collective bargaining agreements, ASME, 10,065, Steelworkers, 40,830, Teamsters Police, 445,750, the total from that is 496, 645. Then we have an Oak Colony lease purchase of 132, 823. That's the other thing, how we balance the budget as well, right? We had Oak Colony back in, and he talked about the last year on the lease, that overlay amount of 132,823 came off the budgets to balance Oak Colony's budget out, because it's the last year of the lease, so again, if we didn't have that, we would be in big trouble, we would never make it.
And that'll be in the funding motion for the budget.
That's correct, to offset the budget. Article 21, in the amount of $10,065 for, so I already just went through this, that's just for funding the ASME. The Article 22 is for the Steelworkers, Article 23, in the amount of 445,750 is Teamsters. Article 24.
Hold, please.
We're gonna hold that, it's a conversation over Slocombe Street and funding. Article 25 is the same. Article 25 is the same, it's funding for Slocombe Street, trying to fix that nightmare road.
Article 26 is a hold for the same reason, the bids on Slocombe Street came in today, an hour before this meeting.
So, we can, we're gonna, there's no dollar amounts plugged in, so we're gonna, we'll make adjustments to it and take it up in the next one. The operating budget that we just went through is Article, now Article 27, and that's it?
And the, and Article.
Oh, and then there's a Stormwater Article, I'm assuming that would be 28?
No, it'll be 30, because then you have the, Article 28, 29 will be Gulf and Sewer.
Oh, that's correct, we don't have those, that's right. We have, I'm sorry, yep, Article 28, Mr. Kelly and I need to review those numbers, we did the budget, we did the budget, but the numbers have changed, so we can't plug them in. Article 29 is Sewer Enterprise, and I can tell you by looking at that number that.
So, I asked it those to be held.
And then, there's a Bylaw Review Committee meeting, I believe, today at 3 o'clock. Mr. Inkley?
Correct.
Mr. Inkley will be, is on that committee to go through the MS4 Stormwater Bylaw. Just so you know, Mr. Inkley, I did make a comment, I did not read through this whole thing, I know Mr. Resendi, the Chairman of the Concombs, done a phenomenal job, Mr. Francois, and Mr. Dave Devignan from the Board Health, had a meeting together and vetted this thing out in a public, and then they plan about it at a public hearing. There is one spot, I don't think something belongs. It's on the Article 3, Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance, Section 1, applicability. There's two different applicability sections, there's an Article 2, there's an Article 3. The second one, letter B, I think it needs to be the last, the letter B, it says the following activities are exempt from the provisions. the following activities are exempt from the provisions of section 1A, any activity that will disturb an area less than 40,000 square feet provided that it is not part of a larger common plan, development plan. I think it needs to be period, because then it says for any large scale ground mounted solar, photal- photalic installation, I do not believe that that last sentence belongs there, they are not exempt.
I think it was a, uh, cotton paste mistake, because we want no exemptions for the solar.
Correct. So, that's the only comment I have on that, I'm gonna leave it up to the bylaw review committee, I left it up to conservation planning and, um, Mr. Divinian, I'll settle that thing up, and then they put it to a public hearing, um, and I'm leaving it up to you to make sure the bylaw is correct.
Consider it done.
Thank you, sir. Alright, so we'll do something next week, uh, on the warrant, but the budget sets, so, next we have a, we all set, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kelly, you all sat with the warrant and budget?
Yeah, I wanted to forward off what you've approved, can, uh, did we have a vote on-
Motion, yeah, we did a motion to approve the budget, but we ain't doing the warrant yet.
There are articles that are not held.
Yeah, do that.
Well, we gotta hold golf and sewer then.
Yeah, you already held that, there's five, uh, articles that were held.
Okay, whatever ones we held, is there a motion to approve all of those?
I'll send those to council then.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, Mr. Kelly, whatever ones you need held, then you can put it on Mr. Inkley's next agenda. Jamie, whatever ones we all held, you keep, you keep track of that, right? You might wanna hold a stormwater bylaw until that-
Until that, yeah.
Until they, the bylaw review, in case they have other, any other changes or whatever. Alright, so we have an appointment for SERPAD, Joint Transportation, um, appointment, Mr. Warner, I see your name over here, so it looks like you're volunteering yourself, so is there a motion to appoint Selectman David Warner to the JTPG?
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, and Mr. Ken, appoint Mr. James Kelly as the JTPG alternate.
Mr. Chairman, this committee is extremely important, because all of the DOT funding goes through it.
Okay, very good, well, we got the right people on it, so there's a motion to appoint Selectman Warner to the, as an appointee to the JTPG, and is there a motion to appoint James Kelly as the alternate to the JTPG?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, this was the one that gets a little tricky, I did call, again, thank you to Chief Fallon, um, I was looking for run numbers, how we normally approve this gentleman, so instead, without mentioning any names and any pertinent information, protected by HIPAA, I am just gonna read off the invoice amount, um, for hardship abatement, which is way past, um, Chief Fallon's time, it was under the former fire chief's time, so it was a balance of 153577, $1,535.77, invoice number 21-20815, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hmm, finally, next one, the next one is in the amount of $338.82, and that invoice number is 19-163452, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. We usually do it by run numbers. Vacation carryover, I've had a discussion with three of the employees that I call, the chief, Chief Fallon notified me that he's had, um, one of his staff members out on injured on duty, um, so in the contract, it's either a motion to buy out or carry over. I have, um, concerns about carrying over vacation time, seeing how that person's time was already filled by time and a half, you carry it over, it'll be filled by time and a half again, I don't think that's the best thing to do, so I would make a motion to buy out the fire, um, individuals overtime, um, vacation time, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Then I had a conversation, because I know there's staffing problems in the conservation department, we haven't had a department there for five months, I spoke with Mr. Mello, um, she said she's trying to do what she can to use up her vacation time, she does have five weeks, um, and I explained to her, I know it's been difficult, and we've always made exceptions to the rules about vacation time, because I believe everybody can use it, however, she hasn't had a department in over five months, so I, she said at least a week, um, and I said I would give her up to seven days, so she wouldn't have to lose any of her time and try to burn up her time from now to then, she does have a couple of planned vacations, hopefully she can use it, so is there a motion to buy out up to seven days for Mr. Mello in conservation?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then the last person, Mr. Kelly talked to me about yesterday, was the, uh, guy, Dave in the maintenance department, um, because he's training the school kids and things of the like, and we have elections coming, Tom Eeny coming up in June, that they don't have staff over at the school, um, to help us set up, so Dave will be spending some time over there, I to- I talked to him, he claims he has one week's vacation, um, and that's all he has, but he hasn't been able to use it, and he's got three personal days, I told him to burn his three personal days, so he doesn't lose it, um, and I would allow him, if the board so choose, to either buy it out or carry it over, because he's only got one week, so it's to the discretion of the board if we wanna let him carry over on this one individual, because he's only got one week's vacation, and there's no overtime created if he takes vacation, so. Him being only one week vacation time, it's not a snowball effect, in my opinion, and we have to work a little bit better with staff to make sure that they're taking their vacation and not burning them out, so. Whatever, if we wanna leave it open to Mr. Kelly and in the employee, whether or not we buy out the week's vacation or carry it over, if there's a motion, we'll do so.
Yep, so moved.
Either or.
Second.
Alright, he's gotta burn his personal days, so up to five days, alright? Alright, I don't know, I haven't, I talked to some people earlier on about that. Mr. Kelly, we got fiber optics and cameras on, but we also have something under executive session, do you wanna just pass over the open session, or you wanna speak on fiber optics and cameras?
No, we should do the executive session, and we'll pass that over to the next agenda.
Okay, boss. Acushnet for Haven, intermunicipal agreement, golf beach pass. Selectman Warner, you've been working on this, I'm gonna leave the discussion to you.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, as you recall, the for Haven BPW voted to award, to allow 100 Acushnet resident permits for West Island at $40, which is the for Haven rate, um, thanks to Sydney's help, we crunched the numbers on our end, um, it's a significant savings for our resident if all 100 took over, uh, so based on that analysis, I think for this season, to make it easy from, easier from a, um, you know, logistical standpoint, to provide the same, to allow for Haven residents to golf Acushnet at the Acushnet rate, um, for this season, you know, we'd have to get close to 1,000 rounds, and I think it'd be impossible to track that, so, and I'd be surprised if we hit that number, but, um, we will monitor it, um, this is a pilot program, and we'll see when we visit it at the end of the season, if it works for both communities, great, if it doesn't, it doesn't, so.
Right.
Then I'd just, I'd make a recommendation that we, um, uh, allow for Haven residents to golf Acushnet at the Acushnet rate.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you. So, Mr. Kelly, I guess we just gotta contact for Haven to let them know that we've done this, I don't know if it requires some intermunicipal agreement, or if it's just an exchange of policy, and then we could do, I would suggest we make it effective June 1, just to make it simple for people. Fair enough?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. So, Mr. Inkley has our-
They just, you need to, I'm sorry, Mr. Warner, I think we need to communicate with for Haven, right?
No.
When that message goes out to the for Haven people, because, I don't know, I'm not a golfer, but I know that there's, you know, Acushnet people have talked to me where, you know, I call for tee time and it's not available, right? So I think that communication, they can't just show up and expect a golf, right?
Same, same rules apply.
Yeah, just making sure that they understand, and they, whenever, if they're gonna do an announcement, they need to give a proper announcement, so we don't have a flood of people showing up and, oh, no, you can't golf, what do you mean I can't golf? I don't know much about the sport, but I know that's-
People who golf, people golf, who golf, they bring in a tee time there.
Okay, just making sure that we don't have people throwing snowballs at Dana. Alright, um, so we have a resignation letter from our veterans officer, after 15 years of rewarding work assisting veterans at local, state, and federal levels of financial and medical needs, it is with mixed emotions that I present this notification of departure from the position of veteran service officer. The town of Acushnet has treated me and my clients recipients with the utmost consideration. Many appreciate the town's diligent policies and concern toward them. I could never have handpicked a more friendly, knowledgeable, and considerate group of fellow employees who bend over backwards to help me when I require their assistance. This includes everyone from the town administration, select board coworkers, and every department ed and personnel I have relied on and enjoyed sharing duties with. I consider myself very fortunate to have had the opportunity, and in many ways wish that it could continue. It was a difficult decision, wishing all the best to each of you in your future endeavors. Ron Carmier. Um, to Ron Carmier, thank you for your years of service as the veteran service officer, um, you know, it's, our veterans deserve the best they can get and the best that we can give, um, you know, we've done a good job of it, I hope we can continue moving forward and do, um, a great job moving forward to represent our veterans. So, with that said, is there a motion to accept Mr. Carmier's resignation as veteran service officer?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the appointment of the interim service officer. I've had a conversation, when I seen this letter, um, I made a quick phone call, he's actually here in the audience right now, it's Mr. Brad Fish, he's, uh, he's, um, retired from the town of for Haven as their veteran service officer. I can't fathom having that office vacated for any amount of time to go out for posting, we cannot leave, uh, veterans, um, out in the dock, so I made a phone call to Mr. Brad Fish and asked him if he would be willing to fill in as an interim veteran service officer, um, and we, the board, could go out and, you know, advertise for a part-time veteran service officer. Mr. Brad Fish is welcome to, um, apply for that position, I've alluded to that, to him as well, he's an outstanding individual, and he's an outstanding veteran of our armed forces, so, um, Mr. Brad Fish, if you wanna just take the podium real quick and just, you know, give the board a quick idea of what you've done in your past at for Haven, whatever you wanna do, just, you're here, you're on-
Thank you, gentlemen, for having me, thank you for having faith in me to do this for you, interim, uh, yeah, we've already gotten started with the flagging the cemeteries, we did that with the American Legion on Monday and Tuesdays, we're all set for Memorial Day, a few more flags I gotta put out there, but I'll take care of those on tomorrow, tomorrow during the day. Hopefully, uh, we'll get the ball rolling, rolling right away, as far as the veteran service officer and Acushnet, and that's pretty much it. I'll probably do a lot of events, that's my game plan, uh, we haven't had a lot in Acushnet, I'm an Acushnet resident, so I'm already planning ahead for like Veterans Day, there's not much I can do for Memorial Day, but Veterans Day, we're definitely gonna have something going on in the town of Acushnet, so, I'm gonna start to bring that back as it used to be.
I think, I think you've already done things right, you hung the rees, the legion donated-
I did, I did all the rees in town last week that the American Legion actually paid for, uh, for Memorial Day, and so, like I said, we've gotten the ball started for Memorial Day, just, it's too short a time to do any kind of service or anything else, but I will have that in the works by Veterans Day, if I did get the job, if not, I would help whoever got the job as far as doing something like, and planning something like that.
Thank you, Brad, I appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity, I appreciate it.
Thank you for the quick response to my phone call, too, no problem, so I appreciate-
Thank you, appreciate it, gentlemen.
Mr. There a motion to appoint Brad Fish as our interim veteran service officer?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we can just run a quick ad in the, in the Faven Naval News if you want, 30 days, anybody that wants to apply, more than welcome to apply, um, we'll go from there. Mr. Brad Fish, can you, I know this is tough, but I'm stuck in a bad spot, right? I have an immediate resignation, I made an emergency call to the one gentleman that I knew could step up to the plate and walk into that business, should be in from for Haven, Brad, I commend you in your heart for, um, in your passion for doing what you do for veterans. I don't wanna put you on a bad spot right now, but can you start next week?
I can, yeah, I can start next week, I can start tomorrow if you need me to.
Cool, good.
So I go through the office and look and see what's going on, and try to figure things out.
So today's Thursday, our IT guy comes in Thursday afternoon at 1?
So I can meet with him tomorrow.
Is he gonna be here?
Friday.
Tomorrow, yeah.
That's, what did I say?
Thursday.
Oh, today's Thursday, yeah, I thought I said today's Thursday, whatever.
I can meet with him tomorrow at 1, that's fine.
So if he, he's gonna be here, right? Okay, so, the reason why I say that is, I don't know anything about what's going on in that office, password protected and things like that, but if our IT guy's gonna be on grounds-
Yep.
If you could show up-
I will.
Um, I'll communicate, or Mr. Kelly could communicate with him, to let him know that he needs to make sure he gets inside that office, and he can get you access to the computer, so you can start looking and getting yourself acclimated, and at least next week, I think Ron's hours were Mondays and Thursdays morning.
Correct, correct.
So, I, I would just ask that if you could accommodate that, I know I'm asking a lot from you, Mr. Fish, but you're a great guy, I, I just don't wanna see veterans walk through the door on Monday morning and not having somebody to service their needs if they need something.
Neither do I, and I will be here, and I'll probably put a lot more hours in, but that's on me, just to get everything rolling.
That's, that's great, I, I truly appreciate your dedication to the veterans and the services that you've done for this country, Brad, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
That's done, United Steelworkers Union Contract, we have that in executive session, Mr. Kelly, you wanna talk about anything on that?
Yeah, the MOA, uh, which was just a quick agreement on verifying the membership of the unit, and, uh, verifying the agreement to withdraw the various, uh, court actions and board actions, and I signed it on behalf of the town, at direction of council.
Yep, and we, we have, uh, we just have some small discussion on an amendment that we had to make to sick leave, so we'll do that in executive session.
That's in the contract, is this the MOA on, uh, getting rid of all those charges?
Okay, I don't have that, but okay, I seen it before, I got it. Do you need any motion on that?
No, council said that it was just so we could have them withdraw the charges.
Okay. Alright, so I'm just gonna, real quick, you know, the next thing is reorg, but there's a vacancy of the tree warden, if you don't mind, Mr. Inkley?
Oh, go ahead.
I'm gonna, just, I don't think there's anything in my book about that vacancy tree warden, so obviously, everybody, or most people in the community know that we've lost our tree warden, Norman Fedett, good friend of the community, myself and members of the board, um, with that said, we will advertise now, it's an appointment by the board of selectmen, um, until the next election, um, so we will have to appoint somebody, so if there's anyone out there interested in being a tree warden for the town of Acushnet, it's a small budget, it pays, I think, a thousand dollars in a salary for the year, um, it's a nice little position for somebody to have, as long as you're knowledgeable on trees and, and roads and things of that nature, it's a great little job for somebody to have, so there's a vacancy there, we'll, we'll accept, uh, until we get a qualified candidate for the position, I guess. Um, and then the other thing that I had on that got added to the agenda was a golf course, cop path work, uh, we can have a further discussion on how we're gonna charge, because we have to, we approve some, but, um, we're now backcharging for our DPW staff labor, so we'll have DPW put those numbers together, we'll put it forward before the end of the fiscal year, so we can get that money back. I know Mr. Manad and his crew's been out on hole 18 and 9, did a phenomenal job out there for the golf course, um, given all the rain and everything else that we had, da-da-da, um, some great work, and, and, and one of the issues here was something about a road, access road that we used, um, with a budding resident. I have since found some information through Mr. Ed Isaac and Mr. Tybalt, so I am working with Mr. Isaac, Mr. Tybalt's, Mr. Kelly, um, and the resident, um, I'm gonna go speak to him about some paperwork that we have on file, just see what the opinion is of the resident, but for right now, I'll just leave that as a mute issue, no actions needed, gentlemen. And now I'm gonna go back to my favorite moment of the meeting, um, it's a reorganization of the board of selectmen, every year after Election Day, we do- of the Board of Selectmen, every year after Election Day, we do a reorg, the next person up for election is the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, so, it's been a great honor for me over the last year, and thank you to everybody that came out and voted, or mail-in voted, taking the time to vote, quite honest, for those of you that did that, great job, thank you very much, and with that said, I'll make a motion, proudly make a motion, to appoint Mr. Bob Hinkley as chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Hey, hey, you can just take that, so I don't have to move all my junk, and you can do that, because now you're chairman.
Get first practice. Just a quick segment, I'd like to thank you both for working with me over the last two years, and really showing me some guidance, along with Mr. Kelly as well, so I appreciate you, all of you.
No problem.
All right, nothing else on the agenda, we do have two executive sessions.
Under Selectmen's announcements? Could I, just a reminder, for perhaps an upcoming meeting, Mr. Chairman, last night I was at Old Colony baseball game, it was senior night for the baseball players, and it occurred to me that we've got a couple co-op students who might be senior, I think are seniors, that are working, Brady, and I think the other gentleman, and for them, I don't know if they play sports or not, but I think their experience here at Town Hall is their team sport, it's very important to them, so I'd like to invite them in to a future meeting where we can reckon, we can recognize their work that they've been doing for the town.
Yep.
Especially the seniors in high school, I think that'd be a nice touch, so.
Absolutely.
Just wanna put that on your radar.
Absolutely.
And my turn on the Selectmen's announcement, you're gonna get used to this, don't worry about it.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna wish everybody a happy, safe Memorial Day weekend, please be safe.
I'll make a Selectmen's announcement as well, happy anniversary to my wife, fifteen years married today.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just would like the citizens to know how much we appreciated the staff, you're appreciated the tree warden, Mr. Fredette, and we have collected some funds, and we are going to plant a tree in his memory over in the Parting Way building area.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Let note, two executive sessions, first one, executive session under General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, subsection Twenty-One A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, United Steelworkers Union Contract, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and the board will not return to public session at the conclusion of the executive session. Is there a motion to go into Executive Session One?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Lo, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Number two, executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, subsection Twenty-One A Four, to discuss the deployment of or strategy regarding security personnel or devices, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and the board will not return to public session at the conclusion of executive session, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Lo, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
And I am a yes, we are now in executive session.